Committee of the whole meeting for Tiffin City Council for December 7th, 2020 to order. Does anyone have anything for the committee of the whole? We have any, we have any motions this evening? Mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, I've got several suspensions this evening if council would entertain doing so. The first council, at least one of the committees is already aware of it and it's ordinance 2120, ordinance 20 dash 126. That is for really all of these I'm about to ask, it's the same essential reasons. They are projects that are occurring early next year and the sooner we suspend them and pass the items, the sooner we will be able to either bid or award the projects, which will in turn bring down the cost and save us money because we'll be in the queue quicker and have first crack at the contractors before they get too busy and drives up the cost. So we've discovered over the last few years, if we actually do this late in the previous year, it saves us money when it comes down to the projects. The first is ordinance 20 dash 126. I know council's already aware of that when it went through committee. The next is ordinance 20 dash 127. The next is ordinance 20 dash 129. And lastly, the ordinance 20 dash 135. Now, all of those, like I said, the same reason. The only one that has a different reason that we're asking for suspension this evening is ordinance 20 dash 133. And the reason for that suspension is we received a donation of $966 to the Parks Department. They'd like to use that right away versus making that sit for three months before they can use the donation. Then also because that includes an additional $127,672.86 of CARES Act funding, which must be appropriated and used by the end of this year, as you all know. So that's the reason that we're asking for suspension of ordinance 20 dash 133. Those are my items for tonight. And I apologize, Mr. President, I goofed up. Ordinance 20 dash 126 was not the ordinance that went through the committee that you all were aware of needing suspension already. With all these lined up, I wrote, read my notes wrong. It's ordinance 20 dash 129 was the one that already went through committee and the committee chair should be aware of asking for suspension of that. But it doesn't change 126, 127, 129, 135, all are the same reasons. We suspend and pass them tonight. We will certainly save money and save resources on the different projects. They're all projects that council's aware of. We've already discussed all of them. The sooner we get in the queue for the construction, the design, the more money we will save before they get into the busy season in 2021 and the cost will only go up from here.
Okay. Who signed 126?
I did.
Okay. How about 127?
Believe that one was also me.
Okay. 129? Hey, you as well, Bridget?
Yeah, that was me, Rich, sorry.
All right, and 133?
You need 135?
133 is me, Mr. President.
Okay. And 135? Steve, okay. All right, everybody's okay with that? Law Director?
Yeah, thank you. One other ordinance for your consideration for suspension is ordinance 20 dash 136. That's the new ordinance that came to you hopefully just late before the meeting here. This came in today. This involves the electric vehicle charging station. As you know, several months ago, the city received notice that they was the selected for a grant, an AEP grant for an electric vehicle charging station. The city administrator's been trying to manage this and it's been very difficult with AEP, an outside vendor that's doing some work on this. The grant that's involved, you may know originally, we thought that the grant had a deadline of, I think it was around the first of November to receive and install and use the funds for the charging station. We've just recently learned that it may be, the grant may be extended into the next year, but it would be helpful if we could move forward with the project that you have approved. And you know that it's 100% grant paid by AEP. What the ordinance does is the ordinance authorizes the mayor to grant an easement so that a power line and transformers can be used installed to then serve the electric vehicle charging station, which is going to be situated right outside of my, my office. If I could see through my wall, if I was Superman, I could see right through to where it will be situated. So it grants AEP the right to do that, the line extension and the transformers to feed the power to the charging station. The other thing that the ordinance does is that it authorizes the city administrator to establish rates for users. And the directive of the ordinance by council is that the rates should cover the cost of the electricity consumed by the users of the charging station. So we're not going to be making any money off of this, but we're going to cover our expense of whatever our electric bill will be. Those rates may have to change every so often as we monitor the electric rates that are charged to the city. So it's worded in a way that gives the city administrator the authority to establish rates and modify those rates to make sure that those costs are covered. So I would recommend for your consideration that you would suspend the three reading rule and pass that ordinance as emergency also, so we can continue to get this project done before the grant deadline, which again may be extended, but this, we've had a lot of different communications with this grant and it would be best to move forward and get it completed as soon as possible.
Who signed that? Bridget, okay. That has, that has an emergency, Brent?
Does, yes.
Okay. All right. Are you okay with that, Councilwoman Boyle? Bridget? Okay. Councilman Jones? Okay, thanks. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Since we're talking about ordinances here and which one do I want to start with? Several of them. Let me get it right here, I got it up here. 20 dash 127 is that one and an eight million dollars grant for East Perry Street project. Why did I think East Perry Street from East Green out to Heidelberg or Circular Street was a completed project? Evidently not, or?
Councilman Leopard?
Oh, you told, you know?
Yeah, this is a different project. It's to rebuild East Perry Street from about where the, the Rock Creek is all the way up Perry Street. That street has been resurfaced before, but there has been so much underlying issues with that, that the complete street needs to be rebuilt. Just paving it continues to exacerbate the problem. It continues to break down, so we're wasting money. So we have an opportunity through some, some help to actually repave or reconstruct Perry, East Perry Street for that section of the road.
Okay, thank you. Then moving on to?
I think Councilman Leopard had an additional comment.
I'm sorry.
That is what Engineer Watson came to us probably 30, 45 days ago and informed us of that situation.
Okay, and then let's move on to 20 dash 133. Maybe I'm being nitpicky here, but the park bench donation and the fourth round of CARES Act, why isn't that two separate ordinances? I'm just confused why it's combined into one.
Law Director?
Yeah, you know, your budget that you pass annually, like you're going to introduce tonight, has many different subjects in it. It might have all kinds of things. This only has two. I agree, we could do two separate items, but I felt that both of these, they're both involving the budget. They're not controversial, I wouldn't think. Both of them, we know we want to spend the funds, we need to put them in the budget. So we could have had more paper, more time, but I thought combining them was not contrary to the interests of the public. And so that's why I put them together.
Thank you. And then one more now, stand down for a minute here. 136, did that come through the email today? Or I haven't seen 136, but I guess I don't need it in front of me, but that's a brand new one that wasn't with the packet?
Yeah. Law Director?
I, I apologize for that. That is, was developed today after we gathered more information from AEP today and over the weekend, really. And so I don't believe I gave anyone time and time to get it out to everyone, but the substance is just as I told you. So, but it is something that needs to keep moving.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy, I had a question for you. Your request for legislation F 20 dash 57, is that covered in ordinance 20 dash 122 tonight?
Actually, I was wondering that too. The budget ordinance seems to be 122. I was actually going to ask Brent that question because I'm not sure where the end of year budget adjustments are, which ordinance it is.
Law Director?
Yeah, it's, it's not prepared yet because I guess I felt that it's a work in progress because, you know, there may be other adjustments. And so you're not going to pass it until the 28th of this month. And so I thought that this would give a little bit more time to try to get to a finished product. That's, that's why it's not included.
Okay. I read through it, I was just a little confused, I wanted to make sure.
It's not in the packet because again, there might be some adjustments that Kathy will need to make.
Right, we have a whole month to go, so especially the projects with Matt working on the projects, those figures would change.
All right, I wanted to make everybody on, all the council members aware of, of a glitch in our pay proposal for the council clerk. She found it and thankfully let me know. We missed, she got a pay raise last year that we missed and she also is scheduled to get one this coming year. So there's a 5% pay increase that is going to be put into the budget. And I had, I don't have it from me, but it's less than a thousand bucks. So hopefully everybody's okay with that. Went ahead and made a command decision. I talked to, I talked to a couple of you about that. I talked to Dan, who's the head of the Personnel Labor Relations and Ben is the head of the Finance Committees, to get their approval and they were, they were good with it. I figured the rest of you would be okay with it too. That'll be brought up tonight. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just while we're on that subject and I was going to wait till later, but yes, we got that and I saw the council clerk gross wages and I divided it by 2,000 hours. It doesn't come out to very much per hour. I was going to ask if we can review that. And when I said review that, I'm thinking more than a thousand dollars annually, but bring that up later.
Yeah, we'll bring that up later, we're getting, getting down to the end here. Okay, I'm going to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. All right, I'd like to welcome all of our viewers to our first meeting of the month, December 7th, 2020. Tiffin City Council this evening will be led in our invocation and a pledge of allegiance by Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, if you could join me in a very brief prayer I saw this afternoon that I thought was, was quite fitting. Dear Lord, in a world where worry, not peace prevails, stir up that good news again. This Christmas, make it real in our hearts. Never have we needed your joy and peace more than now. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
And we will, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, Councilman Gillig, I appreciate it, good prayer. The clerk will now call the roll, please.
Councilman Gillig?
Here.
Councilwoman Yanatuno? Councilman Jones?
Here.
Councilman Leopard?
Present.
Councilman Perry?
Present.
Councilman Shuff?
Present.
Councilwoman Boyle, Councilwoman Boyle, excuse me.
Here.
Well, law director showed that all seven members of City Council were either here or present.
Counting to 10 again, six.
Did everyone have an opportunity to look through the minutes for November 16th, November 23rd and November 30th? Ann?
Yes, Mr. President, Councilman Jones was kind enough to bring to my attention two changes that needed to be made. The first one was on the December 6th, I'm sorry, November 16th minutes. On the first page, about 10 lines up from the bottom, just clarifying that he was still hung up on the issue of the door in front of Calvert, not in front of. So I removed the "not" that has been changed. And again, let's see, motion A on page 3548 of the November 23rd meeting. I put down ordinance 20 dash 114 and neglected to erase the 65 that was after it. So that has been corrected as well.
Are there any other changes? Okay. With the changes noted, without objection, the minutes will stand as approved, will stand approved as presented, excuse me. We're now under committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilman Gillig.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation of Public Property, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilman Shuff.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, I see none, all right. We'll now move on to Reports of the Officers, as Honored Mayor Aaron D. Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. A little longer report this evening just because there are some pertinent items to update everyone on. And I know lately the focus has been all around the budget for the city. So starting off, as we've done with every council meeting since the beginning of the pandemic, we'll discuss finances and coronavirus items. You should have received the report this morning showing that for the year of 2020, finances are essentially flat. Our income is almost equal to what it was in 2019. We are down a few thousand dollars of revenue compared to last year, but it's literally only about $3,000. Where you get into the difference is the folks that have watched every week from the public know where we're at and council members, of course, do, but if you're tuning in for the first time, where we're down is since, since April 1st. So no, it's no April Fool's joke. It's essentially what we consider the start of the coronavirus pandemic and the shutdown that occurred. Since April 1st, revenue is still down $325,000 to where it was from April 1st on of last year. So thankfully, we built up a very strong cushion at the first quarter of 2020. But still, we know that we should have collected, even if we wanted to be flat, another $325,000 in revenue and how we were trending earlier this year, it should have been actually much more than that. The other problem is we're not quite sure yet what's going on with the month of December, but for the month of December so far, granted, we're not quite a full weekend. We are down 80% revenue to where we were last year. We don't get too excited here until we're into about 10 days to two weeks of collections because, you know, you get small sample sizes and it's basically buyer beware with small sample sizes of anything. But in this case, it's the same reason. There are, of course, the weekends do not always fall the same day every year, so we're comparing apples to oranges when it comes to what day of the week the revenue has come in for at least the first few weeks of the year. Same thing with holidays, so nothing to get too excited about yet, but we are down about $73,000 of revenue just in the month of December from where we were December 4th of 2019 to where we were December 4th of 2020. So that is something we're monitoring, keeping our eye on. The other figure is something positive. The latest unemployment numbers show Seneca County has now dropped to 4.3% unemployment. That is the lowest number in all of 2020. Even the first couple of months of the year before the coronavirus pandemic began, we are at our lowest level. So that is a very positive sign and we're hoping that trend continues. So segueing from that, I think is a good time to talk about coronavirus repercussions that we have faced here. I did share this information already with our City Council President Fote, but I think it's numbers that we all need to be aware of going forward. And I know I have preached for the last several months and Council President Fote has and most of councils agreed we cannot shut down again, but I wanted to share some preliminary data. It is not finalized, these are preliminary numbers. So Seneca County, so far in 2020, overdose, overdose deaths are up 220% compared to where they were in 2019. The average overdose, overdose age is only 36 years old. Our overdose calls here in Tiffin for the police department are up 231% from where they were in 2019 to today. Home deaths actually surprisingly doesn't happen all that often. They're up 161%. So these are deaths where we get a call of an individual who has passed away without someone at their home or, you know, they were discovered later. So they're up 161% in 2020 versus 2019. Suicides are also up, however, due to cause of death and other figures, we don't have a hard percentage number to share, but they are up from 2019. And just in the last 60 days, there have been 55 overdoses reported to the emergency department at Tiffin Mercy Hospital. So I think those figures are very sobering to tell us when you have those kind of increases, it is due in large part directly to the shutdown and also the overall sense of people not being able to see one another, see their friends, see their families. It's pretty depressing. I know when I sent the email to Council President Fote, I also shared this with State Representative Bill Reinecke because he's really been an assist for us at the state at trying to keep things from being shut down again. We really can't afford it, as I've said, not just financially, but from a mental health and a physical health standpoint. I think these numbers back things up. To give, give you an indication, the, the, those home deaths that I talked about, people dying alone in their home or whatever, those numbers, the number that we had in 2019 and 2018 were almost identical. There are only four deaths separated with those. But now we've seen 161% increase in 2020. So we can't afford another shutdown again for so many reasons, not just financial, but for our mental health, our physical health and the well-being of a lot of Tiffin's population and Ohio's population. We need to think about these repercussions that full shutdowns have. The virus is very dangerous. It is causing death. It's leaving a lot of destruction in its wake, but we can't be adding to those numbers by these forced shutdowns of our businesses and our healthcare industry, essentially leaving people to turn to things such as drugs, suicide and increasing our depression and those needing mental health and physical health. So my plea continues to be to the officials of the state of Ohio, do not shut us down again. Do other matters to mitigate things, but do not shut us down. I would encourage the public to do their part to continue to limit the spread because that's what we have to do to avoid another shutdown. We know the governor continues to threaten, he said again today, new, new measures may be coming to limit the spread. I think all of us are okay with new measures as long as they don't get to the degree of a shutdown again or to the degree that is affecting people's mental and physical health. So I wanted to share those sobering figures with all of City Council and the public this evening to let everyone know that we have to look at the coronavirus pandemic as a big picture item and not just strictly look at it with tunnel vision of only coronavirus versus nothing else. We are dealing with coronavirus versus mental health, versus physical health, versus depression, versus financial matters, versus businesses. It's a lot in it and we cannot continue to look at this as the only problem out there facing us today is COVID-19. So with that, an update on COVID-19 and the vaccination process. There are currently approximately 739 active cases right now in Seneca County. As of this morning, we have had 39 deaths. I do want to report some information. There's been a local task force formed, myself, the Schweitzer, John Sparre, Sheriff-elect Stevens is on there, State Representative Bill Reinecke. We also have David Zach and Bryce Riggs representing the business community as well as Dan Barbie from Mercy Hospital, who represents several of the rural hospitals in this area. This group is working on the vaccine rollout and other ways to try to limit the spread of coronavirus so we can keep our businesses open here locally. One of the items that will be launched at 8:00 a.m. this coming Wednesday, December 9th, will be an FAQ website that will be filled with all kinds of facts and information about the coronavirus vaccine, but also about coronavirus in general. That will be rolled out at 8:00 a.m. I can't give you the link yet. We're going to put out a full court press with social media, the newspaper, the Seneca News Daily, anyone that we can get to share it. We don't want to share the link yet because it's already live for us because we're looking at it, submitting feedback and making tweaks. So I don't want to send it to you now because there could be errors on there or things that we still have to change, but we will have all of that information out. The website will be live for everyone to view at 8:00 a.m. Then starting that day, from 8:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, there will be someone available, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to answer calls and questions here locally about vaccines and about the overall COVID-19 updates and situation for the public. We've done this because there seems to be a lot of confusion about COVID-19 and about the vaccination process. There will be a, what's called a pop-up test here in Seneca County in Tiffin that anyone can go through. You do not need an appointment and there is no cost and you do not have to be exhibiting symptoms. Anyone can go to it for any reason, no cost. It will be on the 20th of January at the Seneca County Fairgrounds. We are working with the National Guard because we need a lot of volunteers. We have a, a local group that has put together about 50 volunteers for us, plus with the National Guard. We're hoping to do it. We're hoping to do at least four, if not eight, hours straight of testing. So this is all tentative based on, of course, January weather is very fickle. You never know what we're going to get, but pencil in on your calendars, January twentieth, as the date gets closer, we will update everyone in case something has to change because of a snowstorm or or negative zero-degree temperatures. But there will be pop-up testing here in Seneca County. Any person can be tested. They don't have to live in Tiffin, they don't have to live in Seneca County, anyone can be tested. And then those people who test positive will be correlated with the county that they came from. They will not just count here in Seneca County. If you do not want to wait for that, there is a COVID-19 pop-up site in Fremont this coming Wednesday, December ninth. It is at Roger Young Park in Fremont. Again, this is no cost, no appointment needed. Ten AM until two PM at Roger Young Park in Fremont, ten AM till two PM on this coming Wednesday, the ninth of December, any resident of Ohio can attend that pop-up test in Fremont. You do not need any money, you do not need any proof of insurance, you do not need a doctor's note, you do not need an appointment. My recommendation from the experiences of other pop-up sites, if you're going, get there early, because the lines can be long. So the vaccination rollout, here's what we're looking at. The first rounds of vaccinations will be for healthcare workers working directly with COVID-19 patients, EMS, so our local fire EMS, and then residents and staff of facilities such as assisted living, nursing homes, and veterans' homes and group homes. We expect on Tuesday, December the fifteenth, the first Pfizer vaccines will arrive. With that, you get a shot on day one, and then you must return and get a second shot vaccination on the twenty-first day. It's a two-rounder. If you do not get both rounds of that vaccine, it is extremely ineffective. If you get both rounds, the effectiveness rate is over ninety-five percent. Then on Tuesday, December the twenty-second, the first round of Moderna vaccines arrive. And again, it's a two-piece, a two-part vaccine. The first shot you get obviously on day one, you will then get the second follow-up vaccine on day twenty-eight. So it's a little different than that, the Pfizer vaccine. The nice part is you get the shot in equal parts, so you don't have to worry about measuring different amounts, asking, is this your first, your second? It is an equal vaccine on day one, day twenty-one, or day one, day twenty-eight. We did have a call earlier today with Health and Human Services Director Alex Azar. He stated on that call that they hope and their goal of the Health and Human Services Department is by mid to late January, that they believe they may have up to twenty million Americans vaccinated by that point. And they are hoping to have seventy percent of Americans vaccinated by late May or early June. One item that I have brought up on, I think, every call or Zoom meeting that I've been in, is I don't know if we're being quite as expansive enough when we're looking at who exactly a first responder is. Because after we get done with 1A, which is those folks that I mentioned, the healthcare workers working directly in COVID-19 care, folks at assisted living or nursing homes, EMS employees. One item that I have continued to bring up is, I think in Group 1B, we have got to include snowplow drivers in Tiffin and Seneca County and the townships. And no one on any of the calls I've been on yet, up until now that I've been talking about it for a couple of weeks, had thought of that. And I don't think they realize Ohio weather is so volatile. And if we do not have our plow drivers in Tiffin, for example, vaccinated, we don't have many of them. And if we get twelve to fourteen, sixteen inches of snow, and we can't get EMS, fire, police, anywhere, you can't get your healthcare workers to the hospital to take care of our patients, we're going to have far bigger problems on our hands. So I've continued to push, and now John Spar and Bill Reinicki are echoing those concerns in Columbus and other agencies, that that we understand plow drivers can't be in that first group because it's so limited. But the next round, we really need to consider snowplow drivers because of the extreme danger we could be in if we're hit with a winter storm in the next several months. Lost my place in my timeline here. So Mercy Hospital, this morning, Dan Barbie did let us know that Mercy Hospital in Tiffin and regionally in Northwest Ohio is nearing a hundred percent capacity right now. Currently, there are fifteen COVID-19 patients out at Tiffin Mercy Hospital, and there are many more overall around this entire Northwest Ohio district at all of the regional hospitals. We are approaching nine thousand, or one thousand currently hospitalized. At this time, elective surgery is still on at Mercy Hospital, but if things get much worse, that will be the first item that Dan Barbie said would have to be cut. Okay, so enough about that. We'll get on to some good, positive news. Council was made aware of the wireless project that was going on through the community for the downtown, and we're pleased that that is now live. Kudos to Nate Brickner, the city of Tiffin and Seneca County government for working together on this project. We are bringing wireless internet to the downtown at no cost to those who want to use the service. This is a kind of a test market area. It could be expanded later if it's utilized very well by our local residents or visitors into downtown Tiffin. It's a hundred percent free. You can be on it for as short or as long as you want. The only thing is every hour you watch an advertisement video lasts about thirty seconds. Once you're done watching that video, you have free Wi-Fi then for an entire sixty-minute period. And then again, you'll have to watch a different advertising video. But we think this is going to make downtown Tiffin very attractive to young professionals, to families, whether it's people coming to visit, whether it's new businesses. But this is just the start. It could easily expand out if it is very popular and liked. But as I said, John Monk from Channel Eleven was down earlier, and we talked about this a little bit for a news clip this evening. I think you'd really struggle to find a city of Tiffin's size, or even twice the size of Tiffin, that has an amphitheater in the downtown that is free to use, that there are concerts and events at almost every weekend. There's a splash pad that is free to use, that has a light show. Now you add in free Wi-Fi, the very bustling scene that we have with the local boutique shops, the restaurants, the bars. I think we have one of the best downtowns that is extremely attractive to people of any community of our size in the area, if not in the state of Ohio. Kudos to Amy Reinhart. Also, as I mentioned, Nate Brickner with this and Bascom IT for everything that they've done. It's really a home run and a boon for business downtown to keep downtown Tiffin on the map and progressing. A very quick update on the railroad safety project for city council. CSX plans to have all of the quad gates installed at every crossing by the end of 2020, unless we run into rough weather, which means everything is on schedule for the project to be completed by the middle or end of this summer of 2021, meaning immediately upon completion of the project, we will submit the application for the Quiet Zone to the Federal Rail Authority. And at that point, it is in the Federal Rail Authority's hands. As soon as they sign off on the Quiet Zone, the Quiet Zone will begin here in the city of Tiffin. So we could have an end of train whistles by either the middle of next summer, the end of next year. It's a lot of it's going to depend on when the Federal Rail Authority signs off on that. I know I plan to harp on our federal officials, being Congressman Jim Jordan, Senator Portman, and Senator Brown, to push them, to push the Federal Rail Authority to look at our paperwork and get things approved as quickly as possible. I may call on some council to help with those calls so that we can ensure that that money was well spent and our Quiet Zone is implemented sooner rather than later. A couple of other items. I am pleased to report that all nine of our members of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division that have been out for the last, over a period of the last three weeks with coronavirus have returned. They are all considered recovered. At this time, we are just down to one member of Tiffin Police Department who is off and one member of Public Works. So we're hoping we have turned the corner and that the outbreak that we had here at the city has been contained. You may have seen on November the twenty-fifth, we dedicated the alleyway behind the United Way office that runs between Madison Street to Main Street as Pat DeMonte Way. It was a ceremonial name that was given to the alley. We all know Pat, her years of service, whether it was through the millions of dollars that the United Way office granted and helped out struggling families, struggling businesses, organizations, to really lift up the community, also her time at SCAT. This was something that the administration thought was the least we could do to help honor Pat DeMonte and all that she has given back to the Tiffin and Seneca County community. I want to wish Pat the very best on her retirement. I'm hearing good things about Carrie Steele, the new director at the United Way, but she's got big shoes to fill, because we all know Pat and the many wonderful things that Pat DeMonte and her team at the United Way has done for Tiffin and Seneca County over the years. I want to congratulate firefighter Andrew Bros. He was recently promoted on that same day, November twenty-fifth, to the rank of lieutenant. He is the newest lieutenant of the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division, and I want to wish Andrew and his family all the very best as he embarks on his new journey as a lieutenant in the Tiffin Fire and Rescue Division. Congratulations to Todd Sarka and his team at Sarka Sheat Metal. Thirty-five years in business at Sarka. I took a tour of the facility last week. Just really cool to see all the things that he's got going on there, and literally, the guy can design and create almost anything out of metal, whether it's bending, cutting. To see that in operation is really neat. And they've been an intricate business to the Tiffin, or to the city of Tiffin. I know they've partnered with us in the past to custom-make some pieces that we've needed, whether it's for Public Works, whether it's for our sewer plant. He's just been extremely helpful and generous at really cutting costs for things that we need, that normally we'd have to track down some major manufacturer across the country that would charge outrageous amounts to the pieces. Todd and his team have put them together for basically pennies on the dollar. And it was really neat to see how much Sarka Industries ties into all of the other industries in Tiffin. They make pieces for National Machinery, for Webster, for Taiho, Toledo Mold and Dye. A lot of the facilities right here in Tiffin, they're making all kinds of pieces and parts for. So with that, they are having kind of a rededication ribbon-cutting and an open house this coming Thursday, December tenth at four PM, if council's interested in showing up and congratulating Todd and his team on thirty-five years. Another anniversary was celebrated last week, the Willows of Tiffin. I don't know about all of you, but to me, it's shocking that they've been here for an entire year already. That's the new trilogy facility out on Progress Parkway in Fair Lane. So everything is going well. They're extremely happy that they have come here to Tiffin. There could be an additional phase of that project in the future that they're still looking at. But all systems go. They're very happy with their decision to locate here in Tiffin, Ohio, and they're fully staffed up and full at capacity right now, and there's a waiting list to get in. And then, last but not least, I want to thank a couple of local organizations. First off is the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Services for hosting the Christmas tree lighting ceremony this past Friday in downtown Tiffin. We had a very small crowd on hand, about twenty or twenty-five people. But then I do know that we had about a hundred and fifty individuals that were watching live on Facebook as that event was ongoing. A great job by Beth Nadia, who played some wonderful Christmas music for all of us. And then, of course, the tree being lit along with the Justice Center lights, just everything really looked wonderful. Like I said, a hundred and fifty people watched live on Facebook, and since that time, there's been almost two thousand views of the video of the ceremony since it was live. So a big thank you to Bryce Riggs and Deb Marana and Brittany Cook, the Seneca Regional Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Services. And then also a huge, huge thank you to Kiwanis of Tiffin for the Christmas reverse parade that they held this weekend. I know Tiffin Pedal Company was out there. I'm not sure if any of the rest of you were. I know Councilman Jones. I don't think any of us could have expected how many vehicles were going to show up to that thing. The first car came through five minutes early at ten fifty-five, and the last vehicle didn't get through till at least one thirty-five, if not after. It was nonstop, backed up everywhere. I know CERT and the Kiwanis staff did the best they could to direct traffic. There were a few people who were unhappy about either the wait time or traffic out on Ella Street and Hopewell. But you know, it's one of those things that, no matter what we did, I don't think we could have possibly imagined how many folks were going to show up for it. But I can't thank Kiwanis enough for not just canceling the parade. They decided to come up with a creative solution. I think people are desperate to get out of their homes and do something, and to see the smiling faces on all these children. But what I remarked to the person next to me was, I was just shocked, and it made me feel really good about how many cars came through with just one single person in it driving. And to me, I expected every car that came through was just going to be a car with, you know, a bunch of kids in it. And to actually see a bunch of, whether it was a single elderly man, a single woman, whatever it was, I think it really kind of touches you to know that this was not just for the kids, which is a lot of what we think of parades. But there were a lot of single individuals that waited in a half-hour or forty-five-minute line to go through this event, because we all just need something to do. And you know, Christmas time is especially special to us. So I just hope that we being, you know, everybody who's at the parade, Kiwanis was able to give people a little something this year for Christmas. So thank you, Tiffin Kiwanis, for carrying that out. A huge salute to all of you at Kiwanis for the planning, especially Kristy Krenzline, for everything that she did with the organization. So I know that was a lot more than I normally have, Mr. President, but I think it was all pretty pertinent information. So if there are any questions or comments, I'm more than happy to answer them.
A lot of good stuff there, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions or comments for the mayor? I just have, when I got, when I got the mayor's email about the Corona, the effects of the coronavirus, not from the people necessarily who had gotten sick from it, but the collateral damage, it was mind-boggling. We just have no idea that there's, that that kind of activity is going on in the, on the community, this related economic shutdown. I mean, so these lockdowns do not work. They make things worse. If we destroy our economy, what have we gained? So I'm glad to see that the General Assembly passed a bill that says that they're going to be a part of the process moving ahead for, you know, whatever the governor decides he wants to do. And I think that's good, because it gets it a little closer to us. We have direct communication with our representatives, and we can let them know how we feel. I think it takes the pressure off of the governor that he's not alone out there making these decisions. So I was, I was really happy to see that. Now, he's threatened to veto it, but my understanding is the General Assembly has enough votes to take and override his veto. So anyway, I appreciate your email, Mayor. And I think that we're getting closer to, to the end of this. We just need to, we just need to be vigilant, practice good health, health and safety, and we'll be okay. So anybody else have any comments? Thank you, Mayor. Clerk and Council, Ann Forrest.
I'll report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for November 2020. Total receipts for the month were seven million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, six hundred six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Total expenses for the month were six million, four hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. General fund unencumbered balance is three million, three hundred sixty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Income tax receipts for November 2020 were eight hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. The total annual increase in income tax collections for November 2020 compared to November 2019 was a hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. At the end of November, we were actually up year-to-date point seven-three percent. The portion of income tax receipts that was transferred to Fund 215 for Public Streets for November was ninety-seven thousand, three hundred nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. The unexpended balance for all funds is twenty-six million, seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is the same The unexpended balance for all funds is $26,798,894.67, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And one item to note for December, as we're looking at things the first couple of days. One thing that I did question Linda about our tax commissioner. She said that she looked back at last year and there were some estimated tax bills that were sent out a little bit earlier last year than they were this year. So that would definitely have a little bit of bearing on what we're seeing as a little bit of shortage for the beginning of December at this point. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for the Finance Director? Councilman Gillig.
No question, Mr. President, but I would so move that we accept the Finance Director's report as presented. Council should have received an email on Tuesday, December 1st with the bank reconciliation. And Thursday, December 3rd with the Finance Director's report.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the Finance Director's report. Is there a second? Councilman Shuff.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motions? Oh, Councilman Gillig.
Sorry, just the, I don't know if this is an all time record, Finance Director Kaufman, but. So we finally had a check cash from 12/26/2019 in this month's bank reconciliation.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion passes unanimously. Director of Law, Brett T. Howard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Following your last, council's last special meeting on the 23rd. I filed the DORA documents, the application ordinance and other related documents with the Division of Liquor Control. They've acknowledged receipt of those documents and they are processing them like they did for our DORA back in the summertime. I hope to hear in the next two weeks that they've approved the, the DORA. And so it will become effective per your legislation, January 1st. So I will keep you advised and, and of course, keep the permit owners advised too, because they will be receiving. A notation for their liquor permits to participate in the, the upcoming DORA that you approved. The other item, a couple items I have related to your agenda. Ordinances 20-130 and 20-131 involve zoning of property. And to follow the charter provision regarding zoning measures. You will need to, following their introduction tonight and first reading, you will need to table each of those. And then also the, the President of Council, you should schedule a joint public hearing with the Planning Commission. That cannot be held sooner than 15 days following this meeting. So I suppose it could be on the 28th when you have your special meeting, although I know that that's designed really for your budget ordinance. So you could schedule that joint public hearing with the Planning Commission on the 4th of January at your first meeting in 2021. Then also related to zoning. You'll see in your packet that the Planning Commission has submitted their written responses to ordinances 20-110 and 20-112. And they are on the table right now, waiting for that correspondence from the Planning Commission. So it's appropriate during motions tonight to remove those from the table so that they then can be read for their second reading this evening. Are there any questions about my report and in particular the procedure for the zoning matters?
Anyone have any questions?
That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
We're now under, we're now under oral communications. Anyone from the attending public that wishes to speak to council? You can do so by raising your hand and being identified by the mayor.
You skipped written communications first. I know you wanted to skip that intentionally because there's so many of them tonight.
You're right. You know what? I'm looking at it. I'm thinking we're out of, it's out of order.
You did that subconsciously because the, the list is so long.
You're right. And, and I apologize.
It's okay. That's okay.
It's, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta remember what you're working with here. So, all right. We'll back up here. We're now under written communications.
I'm going to try and help make it a little shorter. The first ones from the mayor are all for reappointments to the various boards. So I'll just run real quickly through them. Number 20-48. Reappointment of Jessica Worth to the Architectural Board of Review. Number 49. Reappointment of Rob Neck Jr. to the Architectural Board of Review. Number 50. The reappointment of Tony Consolo to the Architectural Board of Review. Number 20-51. The reappointment of Colin Paylor to the Americans with Disability Act Advisory Committee. Number 20-52, the reappointment of Dan Bistel to the Americans with Disability Act Advisory Committee. Number 20-53, the reappointment of Gwen Reinhardt to the Income Tax Board of Review. Number 20-54, the reappointment of Brian Glover to the Julia M. Weller Commission. Number 20-55, the reappointment of George Fritz Jr. to the Park and Recreation Board. Number 20-56, the reappointment of Felicia Frankert to the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission. Number 20-57, the reappointment of Joan Martin to the Tiffin Recreation and Beautification Endowment Fund Board. And number 20-58, the reappointment of Stacy Routson to the Thomas Connor Memorial Commission.
All these requests, 20-48 through 20-57 are referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
And then I have mayor's request for legislation, number 20-59, to create an easement located at 258 Progress Parkway.
Mayor's request for legislation 20-59 is referred to the Law and Community Planning Committee.
And we have a new one that was just given to me this afternoon, mayor's request for legislation, number 20-60. Contract with Ohio Attorney General's Office for the purpose of collecting the link income tax bills.
What was the number on that?
20-60.
20-60, ordinance, or excuse me. Mayor's request for legislation 20-6 is for the Finance Committee.
And I have Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F20-55, to amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84. Allow for the recording of the fourth round of CARES Act Coronavirus Relief Funds.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F20-55. Will be held on file in the, in the clerk's office. Ordinance 20-133 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F20-56. To amend the 2020 Budget Ordinance 19-84 to appropriate funds into the Parks Department budget.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, F20-56. Will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 20-133 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
And Finance Director's Request for Legislation, number F20-57 for 2020. Year-end budget adjustments to cover increases or decreases in appropriations and advances.
Finance Director's Request for Legislation, F20-57 will be referred to the Finance Committee.
And then I have the letters from the Planning Commission that the Law Director commented on approving. Orness 20, passage of 20, I'm sorry, recommending approval of ordinance 20-110. And the other letter recommending approval of ordinance 20-112.
Both these letters from the Planning Commission will be held on file in the Clerk of Council's office.
And that is the end of the written communications.
Okay. Now we go to oral communications. Anyone from the attending public wishing to speak to council? Please raise your hand so that you can be identified by the mayor and he will call on you.
Hey, Mr. President, we do have six people in the attendee room. I'm not sure if any of them wish to speak. However, if you do wish to address City Council, please click the feature located on your screen that says raise hand. And then you will be able to address council. Going once, going twice. And I do not see any hands, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move on to motions. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to remove ordinance 20-110 and ordinance, ordinance 20-112 from the table.
All right, let's start with 20-110 first. We have a motion to remove 20-110 from the table. Is there a second, Councilman Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to remove ordinance 20-110 from the table. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. On the table. On removal.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Orness 20-110 is removed from the table with a vote of seven to zero. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove ordinance 20-112 from the table.
We have a motion to remove 20-112 from the table. Is there a second, Councilman Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote, please. On the removable.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Boyle?
Yes.
Orness 20-112 is removed from the table with a vote of seven to zero. We're now, we're now, we're now under resolutions.
I have no resolutions, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 20-105 introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance creating the zoning classification R4A, multiple family residential agricultural district. For the purpose of permitting agricultural uses with restrictions along with multiple family residential uses.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-105. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for passage of ordinance 20-105.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-105. Is there a second? Councilman, Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to call the vote, please. On the passage.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Orness 20-105 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Orness number 20-110 introduced by Bridget Boyle. Orness zoning approximately 9.798 acres of land owned by R&amp;L Zeiss Family Limited Partnership, 3 LLC and others. And proposed for annexation from Hopewell Township as zone R4, multiple family residential district. compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the second reading, ordinance 20-110.
Orness number 20-112 introduced by Bridget Boyle. Orness amending sections 1169.02 and 1171.02 of Tiffin codified ordinances. Adding a nano distillery as a permitted use in the C2 general commercial and C3 central business districts.
This is the second reading, ordinance 20-112.
This number 20-116 introduced by Kai Shuff. Orness amending sections 907.07D and E of Tiffin codified ordinances decreasing the annual percentage increase in sewer rates to 4%.
This is the third reading of ordinance 20-116. Councilman Shuff.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for council passage of ordinance 20-116, please.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 20-116. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
A second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage, please.
Councilman Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Shuff?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Orness 20-116 passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Orness number 20-122 introduced by Ben Gillig. Annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin. For fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021 and ending December 31st, 2021.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-122.
Orness number 20-123 introduced by Ben Gillig. Orness authorizing the transfer of funds from the 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-123.
Orness number 20-124 introduced by Ben Gillig. Orness authorizing the transfer of funds from the 552 Sewer Revenue Fund to the 557 Combined Sewer Separation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-124.
Orness number 20-125 introduced by Ben Gillig. Orness, ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds and payment of bond and loan principal and interest and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-125.
Orness number 20-126 introduced by Tyler Shuff. Orness authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications. Advertise for and receive bids and recommend and execute a contract for the construction of John Avenue improvements.
This is the first reading of ordinance 20-126. Councilman Shuff.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for council suspension of the three reading rule and passage of ordinance 20-126, please.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and passage of ordinance 20-126. Is there a second, Councilman Gillig?
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no reservations about skipping the three reading rule, but I would hope Councilman Shuff or Gillig would go into a little more detail for the public's benefit of why we're suspending the three reading rule.
I'm going to ask the mayor.
Yes. So we're asking suspension of the three reading rule on ordinance 20-126. Ordinance 20-127. Ordinance 20-129 and ordinance 20-135. The reason we're asking for suspension on all of these aforementioned ordinances. Is due to the fact they're all projects that City Council has previously discussed. And the sooner we bid them out and award the contracts, the better prices we will get. Thus saving tax dollars. The longer we wait, the more expensive quantities go. The more expensive the construction firms will be because the more projects they have lined up. We're trying to get these in the hopper as quickly as possible for bidding so that one, we can scatter the work out. So that we don't have every street or bridge shut down at the same time and two. So that it allows us to get the cheapest and best prices from the contractors before prices go up after the first of the year.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else have a question? Councilman Gillig.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, just, just a quick follow up, Mr. Yeah, just, just a quick follow up, Mr. Mayor. Is it sort of like how it is when, I remember, you know, years ago, right after our son Hudson was born, I came home to find that our porch had collapsed, and this was April, and it was almost impossible to find anyone to work on it. Do we run into that same issue? Say, if we have an emergency that we need to contract out, is it very difficult to really find anybody that can do it?
Yeah, lately, really, with what we've seen, contractors are extremely busy, whether it's on small projects or major, and a lot of that is folks and businesses and cities. They're starting to do a lot of investment versus expansion and whatnot. You know, people are sinking a lot of money into like things that they need at their facilities versus going out and opening a whole new facility or something like that. So the construction industry is very busy. We've run into that the last few years with projects bidding them out. The later in the year you bid out, the price of asphalt goes up, the price of labor goes up. It's just, we have found that if we finish this at the end of the year and send out bid packs or whatever, either early in the year or at the end of the year, we get far better prices than if we wait until, you know, three months before the project date, and then we send everything out. The bids are just so much higher. So this is an effort really to, to space projects out so that we can bid everything at the beginning of the year and say, okay, now this project, this is when it's scheduled to go, that project, versus if we wait until close to the season, you bid them all out, and you're kind of at the mercy of when these construction companies are available, and you end up paying out the roof for it. So, yeah, we, it's the same kind of concept and theory that the sooner we get the information out, the sooner we get bids, the better prices we're going to get, and the better we'll be able to spread the work out versus having every street shut down at the same time.
Having been in the business for a number of years, I can guarantee you this time of year, all these contractors are out there looking for work going into next year when the weather gets better. So they're all hungry and they're, you're going to get better prices. So I agree with everything the mayor said. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call the vote. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one twenty six passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one twenty seven introduced by Tyler Shuff. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for preparation of the preliminary engineering and design for the East Street, East Perry Street reconstruction project.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one twenty seven. Councilman Shuff.
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for council suspension of the three reading rule and passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty seven, please.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty seven. Is there a second, Councilman Perry?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one twenty seven passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one twenty eight introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept an easement for sanitary sewer purposes from Seneca Assets LLC on two parcels of land on Ellis Street and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one twenty eight.
Ordinance number twenty dash one twenty nine introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for preparation of the preliminary engineering and design for the next phased project of the city's sanitary sewer long-term control plan and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one twenty nine. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty nine.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one twenty nine. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Suspension. Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one twenty nine is suspended with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one twenty nine passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately six point three three acres of land owned by Hedge Gate Condominiums Association in the fourth ward of the city as zone R four multiple family residential district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty one introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately five point three five two acres of land owned by the Fox.
President. I'm, I'm sorry, and there is a hand up by Councilwoman Boyle regarding the tabling of ordinance twenty dash one thirty.
On one thirty.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Mr. President, yes, I would like to make a motion to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty to allow the joint public hearing with the planning commission to take place.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a motion to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty one. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
That should be one thirty. Ordinance.
One thirty, I'm, I'm sorry. No.
We're going to do one, we're going to do one thirty one as well.
One thirty one and one thirty two, aren't we?
No, one thirty and one thirty one are going to be tabled.
Okay.
I'll second the motion to table ordinance number twenty dash one thirty.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the table, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one thirty is tabled with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty one introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance zoning approximately five point three five two acres of land owned by the Fox Revocable Living Trust dated December ninth, two thousand eight, Russell J. Fox and Beverly K. Fox grantors and Russell J. Fox and/or Beverly K. Fox trustees in the first ward of the city of Tiffin as zone M two heavy industrial district compatible with adjacent land use and meeting requirements of Tiffin City Charter and the codified ordinances.
This is the. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty one. Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. President. I like, I like to make a motion to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty one to allow the joint public hearing with the planning commission to take place.
Thank you. We have a motion to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty one. Second, Councilman Leopard.
I'll second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to table ordinance twenty dash one thirty one. Is there any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the table, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one thirty one is tabled with a vote of seven to zero. At this time, I'd like to schedule a joint planning commission meeting to discuss ordinance twenty dash one thirty and twenty dash one thirty one to be held at the first council meeting in the new year on four January, two thousand twenty one at seven o'clock in the evening.
We have ordinance number twenty dash one thirty two introduced by Ben Gillik. Ordinance approving the transfer of one hundred thousand dollars from the capital improvements fund to the three three eight, two thousand twelve to two thousand twenty one fire vehicle fund in two thousand twenty one and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty two.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty three introduced by Ben Gillik. Ordinance amending the two thousand twenty budget ordinance fifteen dash eighty four to appropriate a donation of nine hundred sixty six dollars in the Parks Department budget, one hundred twenty seven thousand, six hundred seventy two dollars and eighty six cents of the fourth round of CARES Act coronavirus relief funds.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty three. Councilman Gillik.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty three.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty three. Is there a second? Councilman Shuff.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Jones, I did think the same thing, although our law director's explanation made perfect sense. But that did, that did kind of amuse me. It'd be like saying, oh, yeah, my grandma sent me a check for five dollars, and then my other grandma sent me a check for a million for my birthday. So I, I did notice that, too. We are asking for suspension to put to good use the donation of nine hundred sixty six dollars to the Parks Department. And then also, we were awarded an additional round of CARES Act funds, which, if I recall correctly, have to be spent by the end of the year. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Thank you. And we need to get those appropriated into the budget so that we can spend them.
Thank you, Councilman Gillik. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Ordinance.
And Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes.
Okay.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one thirty three passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number one, twenty dash one thirty four introduced by Ben Gillik. Ordinance amending and restating ordinance number twenty dash one sixty eight, city pay ordinance to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty four.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty five introduced by Steve Leffert. Ordinance consenting to the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, to perform and complete a project to resurface State Route one hundred from State Route sixty seven to Tiffin Corporation Line and certain streets within the city, PID numbered nine five seven seven eight county slash route slash section Seneca five thirty three slash one hundred dash eight point three six slash zero point zero zero and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty five. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for the suspension of city council's three reading rule and passage of ordinance number twenty dash one thirty five.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty five. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, I will second that, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank our city engineer, Matt Watson, for hounding the Bowling Green Office of ODOT to get this information in front of us. This is literally free, free money to pay huge sections of roadway in the city of Tiffin, South Washington, parts of South Washington, Millmore and South Sandusky Streets. The city will be responsible for handicap ramps and some special curving, but a lot of this, the majority of this money is paid a hundred percent by ODOT. Matter of fact, work is scheduled already for this to begin on April twenty ninth next year.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question or comment? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
Ordinance twenty dash one thirty five passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Ordinance number twenty dash one thirty six introduced by Bridget Boyle. Ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to grant an easement from the city of Tiffin, Ohio to Ohio Power Company or related company for electric lines and facilities to the city's electric vehicle charging station in city lot, city parking lot number seven in downtown Tiffin, authorizing the city administrator to establish rates for the charging station and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance twenty dash one thirty six. Councilwoman Boyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for suspension of council's three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty six.
We have motions to suspend the three reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance twenty dash one thirty six. Is there a second? Councilman Gillik.
I'd like to second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of seven to zero. We'll now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Gillik.
Yes.
Yanatuno. Yes. Jones.
Yes.
Leopard.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
And Boyle.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of seven to zero. Will now vote on the passage.
Councilman Gillig?
Yes.
Giannatuno? Yes. Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Boyle?
Yes.
Order twenty dash one thirty six passes with a vote of seven to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Councilwoman Boyle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um can I please take this time to schedule a long community planning committee meeting?
Okay.
Um, Mayor, I imagine um yourself as well as city administrator and Matt Watson, city engineer, um should be present at this meeting. In addition.
Yeah. Look through all these different requests, which one specifically?
I'm sorry, it is um. Twenty fifty. Twenty dash fifty nine.
Yeah, I think if you had uh. Really myself and Matt or Dale and Matt, you would be completely fine. Um we can easily go over the parameters of it.
Okay. Um Danny and Steve would this Wednesday, the ninth at five PM work via Zoom?
Or school for me?
I, I actually work on Wednesday.
Of course. Um. Okay.
I could do after uh six. I work till six.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Um. Okay, and then do you work Thursday as well?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
I should be. Friday.
Friday, you're, I'm sorry, what, what time?
Uh anytime Friday. I'll just have the kids, uh as long as you don't mind some nonsense here.
Okay.
I'm good anytime Friday. Um I have a meeting from ten AM till noon and that's the only thing right now on the agenda for Friday.
Okay, Steve, do you, do you have any restrictions on Friday?
Uh Friday evening and uh actually. The afternoon is, might be a problem for me. If we, if we had it early.
Sure, yeah, let me look at um my calendar if you don't mind really quickly.
Yeah, while you're looking at that, Councilwoman, um I would think it's only going to be a fifteen, twenty minute tops meeting if it even lasts that long. It's just to explain the easement for the retention pond. Um. I think we can all understand why retention ponds are needed, so it's probably not going to take long at all.
Okay, um would eleven AM be too late for you, Steve?
That's good.
Okay.
That will work for me as long as Dale can attend. Um I've got a meeting Friday. It starts at ten and it probably won't be done until noon because it's our. OPWC meeting and we've got sixty to seventy grant applications to go through. Uh so it'd probably be a two-hour meeting if not more. So if Dale's available though, that I'm, I'm not needed as long as Dale and Matt or whatever can, can be there.
I can be available at that time.
Okay, thank you. Um so I would like to announce a long community planning committee meeting to take place on Friday, December eleventh at eleven AM via Zoom. The purpose of this meeting. Is to discuss mayor's request for legislation number twenty dash fifty nine. Creating an easement located at two fifty eight Progress Parkway, as well as any other business to come before the committee.
Thank you. Mayor?
Uh yeah, um just a reminder, Dale, uh if you'd be willing to set that meeting up then, since I won't be able to technically host it, since I'm going to be in another meeting on the same platform.
I was just about to comment on that. I will certainly do that.
Thank you. So just make sure you send Ann and Nick Dutrow also the uh uh information so they can get that out to the public in, in proper notice.
Do it first thing in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
If you could include me also, Dale, in that in- invitation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Anyone else? Councilman Leopard?
Not really uh for the good of the order, but if Bridget could move to her right a little bit. Until that TV screen, we could all watch football game.
I, I think the funniest part about this is Greg doesn't care about football whatsoever, so it's an interesting choice of uh. What he chose tonight, so.
Uh law director?
Yeah, I wanted to tell council that I believe that um they are setting a record this year. If you know, we have a hundred and thirty six ordinances that have been introduced so far this year. And there'll be a few more, I'm sure. And at least in my twenty-five years with city government, that is by far the most. I'll give you the exact second place year. Uh but um maybe this will be a new trivia for Ben to use uh for some future uh uh trivia night. But I'll give you the exact rankings of years, at least in the last twenty-five at your uh next meeting.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. On that same note, if we were to split ordinance one thirty uh three into the park bench in the. CARES Act, we could have thirty seven.
Anyone else? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, so when I uh picked up the agenda tonight, I um thought it was gonna go a lot later than this, so I made a giant pot of coffee uh in uh anticipation that this will go till about eleven. So now I'm gonna be up till uh, you know, past midnight. I don't know what I'm gonna do yet, but housework make the wife happy.
Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items to discuss for the finance committee. Uh F twenty dash fifty seven and F twenty dash sixty. Um Danny and Bridget. Uh let's look into next week. Are there any nights that may work for you?
I don't think I'm on the finance committee anymore. Could be wrong though.
Oh, you're right. Uh Councilman Shuff, my mistake.
What was the date again?
I don't have one, so. Really, uh any day next week ought to be, ought to be just fine for my schedule.
Yeah, if you just text me a date and time, I'll make it work.
Bridget has.
What?
Boyle, I should say.
That's okay. What time, um what time are you thinking?
Uh oh, uh I mean, I'm off work at, at three o'clock, perhaps uh four.
Um, okay. I could do Monday. It, it just depends. Um I can do Monday at four. Um but Tuesday and Wednesday are a little bit difficult and then I could do Thursday at four as well.
Uh Councilman Shuff with Monday at four work for you?
I want my calendar here real quick. Yeah, Monday at four works for me.
And uh Kathy, would that work for you as well?
That works for me.
Wonderful. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce a finance meeting to be held over Zoom. At four PM on Monday.
Fourteenth?
That's the one. Monday, December fourteenth. Uh purpose of the meeting will be to discuss. Finance directors' request for legislation, F twenty dash fifty seven and F twenty dash sixty. And any other business that may come before the committee.
What time is that, Ben?
Uh four PM. Be is.
Anyone else? Mayor, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Um. Well, thank you again for uh all your efforts and hard work. Uh stay safe, stay healthy, and God bless all of you. Good night. We stand adjourned.
Night.